Okay, good evening. The meeting of the Everett School Committee for Monday, November 1st, 2021 will come to order. Give a roll call vote, please. Mr. O'Connor?
Ms. Aberzey?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Cardello?
Present.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
President.
Mr. La Monica?
Present.
Ms. Murray?
Present.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Sarni? Chairman Parker?
Present. We have seven members present. We have a quorum. Ms. Sarni is recovering from surgery still. So she's not available tonight. Mr. Panerisi will not be in attendance tonight as he has had another grandchild. Wilder Bennett Panerisi, born October 31st. Eight pounds, five ounces, 22 inches. Congratulations to the whole Panerisi family. Could we please all rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, Roman numeral number three.
Thank you, Chairman Parker. Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from October 18th, 2021.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the records and place on file.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to waive the reading and have it placed on file. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, and I'm sorry, I do want to recognize our student rep, Daniel Lewis. Hello, Mr. Lewis, how are you? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So on the motion that's before us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roman numeral number four, please.
Roman numeral four is public comment?
Make a motion to open public comment?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to open for public comment. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. So it's a, I understand that we have a number of people that would like to speak tonight. And Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. McLaughlin, you have the floor. Three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Everett School Committee. Can you hopefully hear me? Superintendent T. Aliani, good evening. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our children, and that is the Hawaii trip. Senator D. Dominico was able to secure $200,000 through state funding for this. I know the two years that I traveled with the band to Washington DC, the pride and the enormous pride that it brought to the community, watching them come down Constitution Ave. I know Mr. Barrows and I talked about it many times while we were in Washington DC. You can't imagine what it feels like seeing our local band in a national parade. Once-in-a-lifetime that was, and this is also. Now, I know times are different with COVID, and we all need to be mindful of that, of course. But I believe one individual who has brought more pride to this community than anyone is June O'Brien. And I know that he thinks daily about students and their well-being. And that being said, I know that he passed out a packet of information tonight. I know that Hawaii is going to relieve all of their restrictions very soon, I believe today. I believe that every measure has been taken to be able to ensure a safe return for all students and members of the staff, volunteers, or parents. Again, to deny the children a once-in-a-opportunity, and I know you guys aren't doing that, but once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go to Hawaii and to be able to perform on the stage of the 80th anniversary is truly remarkable for our community. And I hope that the members will take it under consideration that if the parents feel that their children are safe doing this, then we all, as elected officials, should support the parents of the Everett Public Schools. Myself, the city council, my colleagues, the members of the school committee. That being said, I appreciate your time this evening, and I know we have many others that will speak in favor of this. But I wanted to be here this evening to say that I'm fully in support of this trip. And not for personal health reasons, I would be also joining this trip. But because of personal health issues, I cannot take such a long flight at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Emma Santos. I'm a senior at Everett High, and I've been in the band for five years. I'd like to start off by saying that there are many marching bands in Massachusetts, but we were specifically chosen for this trip because we have a reputation for representing both our city and our state with decorum and pride. Our members continually display a level of maturity well beyond their age and have shown that they are responsible, respectful, exemplary members of our school community. They could have chosen other bands, many of whom have more money, more members, more resources, but they chose the Everett Crimson Tide Marching Band for a reason. As for chaperoning and safety concerns, this band is like a family, and all of us have close relationships with the staff who will be chaperoning us. Our staff has proven their ability to look after this band many times before, including our trips to Washington DC and Dayton, Ohio a few years back. We also have an excellent team of student leaders who look after our younger members as if they were our own siblings. These are not in chartered waters for us. We are a well-oiled machine. Both staff and student leaders take attendance every single time we get on a bus, and no one travels without a group, so we make sure no one is left behind. Our members are extremely responsible, and when they are told to be at a certain place at a certain time, they're right there, five minutes early. I assure you that the safety of our members is always our top priority, whether we're five miles away or 5,000 miles away. And we also have Ms. Yeva, who is basically superwoman, so I assure you that we are in the best of hands. I also ask you to consider the fact that this is Everett. We are not a very wealthy community, and many of these amazing kids who work so hard day in and day out may never get an opportunity like this again. These kids show up time and time again for this community. To promise them that they would be able to go, announce it repeatedly to the whole city, and then just rip that rug right out from under them at the last minute would be, quite frankly, cruel. This band has had a tough couple of years with COVID. I never thought I would be able to march a field show again. And yet here we are, having just completed our competitive season at NSBA finals yesterday with a full field production and two first-place wins under our belt. Not because we lucked out or because the circumstances were favorable, but because all of these kids and staff members showed up and worked their tails off to make it happen. We deserve to go on this trip, and if we do, I guarantee that we will represent not only the state of Massachusetts, but the city of Everett with the utmost dignity and pride. All we need now is your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Hurley. I'm a senior at Everett High School and a five-year member of the Everett Crimson Tide Marching Band. To put that into perspective, that is months upon months of practices, rehearsals, competitions, city, school, and state events. This includes football games, the DC Memorial Day parades, community events, our two-week band camp at the end of August, annual Veterans Day events, and many other events throughout the year. All of this, we did proudly to represent our school and city. Even the youngest members of our bands have loved attending these events, embracing our traditions, and learning from the veteran members. This trip may seem questionable at this time to the committee, but we as dedicated band members see this as an honor. An honorable event that we were invited to because of the months of effort and hard work we put into the band, when we easily could have been doing something else, especially after the difficult year we had in 2020. But we came back stronger than ever with equally as passionate rookies and young members. We all do this because we love what we do and we're a family. Months of dedication going to events and performing for everyone else. Now we have been given this great honor, and it's being questioned. So I'd like to put your minds at ease. We are excited for this trip, we are honored, and our parents and staff are our number-one supporters. Our staff members have done a phenomenal job at making this year fun and engaging, even going as far as basing our competitive show off of this Hawaii trip. This trip isn't just another field trip. We were chosen to represent all of Massachusetts and showcase our talents, and we will do so with absolute pride and respect. There is no question about whether or not we should go on this trip. It is if you will support your band or not, because as you say, Everett's schools are Everett's pride. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker, please.
My name is William. I'm a first-year band member and the youngest man, band member. We are going to Hawaii to perform at the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, a major event that made America what it is today. We have been working for a very long time on our show. I want my band friends and section leaders to go to Hawaii because they earned this trip. I would also like to travel with my older sister before she graduates and moves to college. I'm very happy to be part of the band and think we will make Everett proud. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, William. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Mike Mangan. I just want to say that I am absolutely supportive of the band going Hawaii. I too, like Counselor McLaughlin, was fortunate enough to be in Washington DC a few years ago when Senator D. Dominico ran the trip along with the school committee members, Panerisi and Barrows. Had a great time. Mr. O'Brien did a wonderful job. The students did a wonderful job. And I just think this, as some had said before me, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I hope you will support them and allow them to live their dream of doing this because who knows, some of these children will probably never come again. So I hope and ask that you vote in support in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Enrico Vega. I'm a sophomore here at Everett High School. This is currently my first year in the marching band. And having a lifetime opportunity to go to Hawaii on your first year of marching band is really cool to support like the city of Everett and to represent the state of Massachusetts. And having this opportunity for all the band members, I think it would be like a very cool opportunity for everyone to like show and to prove that Everett's schools are Everett's pride and how everyone in Everett can also be a part as one and come together and support the band. So if you can all let us go to Hawaii, that'll be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent and esteemed members of the school committee. I wanted to participate in tonight's public comment to speak on behalf of the band and more specifically, the Hawaii trip. It has been rumored that the trip may not get approved this evening, and I am here to speak against that if those rumors are true. If they are not true, the worst-case scenario is that you have to listen to me ramble for a few minutes. Let me begin by saying these are some of the most amazing kids I've ever had the opportunity to interact with. Their passion and commitment to their craft is incredible. They are driven and work extremely hard to perfect their performance week in and week out. They have earned this trip, and this is theirs. This is not them following the football team to Gillette or Fenway. This is not them performing at a city event. This is their trip to showcase themselves in Hawaii for the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. If your concerns are safety-related, please know that Massachusetts recommends revisiting the mask mandate for schools after an 80% plus vaccination level. This band is well above that number. But that does not mean they will be removing their masks. They will continue to wear them and be safe throughout the trip. As far as finances go, as far as I know, there will be a loss of money if we cancel versus Hawaii cancelling. If Hawaii cancels, the financial hit will be much less, and that money can hopefully be used to put together a different trip for these young adults. Now, obviously, this will not be an easy decision, but please look at it this way. There are 60-plus members of the Everett Crimson Tide Marching Band, 22 of them are seniors. There are approximately 7,000-plus children in the Everett Public Schools. Many of those kids have probably gone away with family throughout the course of the year or are planning on going away after this year, during this year. Obviously, I understand that it is a school-sanctioned event which makes it different, but the point I am trying to make is that people are going to go away. People are trying to get back to normal. How much more has to be taken from these kids before we realize it is too much? What are we doing to their view of the world? When can they, as a generation, get back to a level of normalcy that we all got to enjoy throughout years of school? Please let them go on this trip. Please let all these young adults know that all of their hard work and dedication is recognized and will be rewarded. Each and every single one of them deserves this. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great night.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Next speaker, please. You've got four and a half minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, it was a pleasure.
Good evening. I'm actually a parent of one of the students that are on the band. My name is Oscar Vega. My son is Enrico Vega. But it's larger than that. I was a parent of huge concern, obviously, with the COVID. I've been part of every youth organization these past couple of years. I've seen a lot of kids not sign up for fear of what's happening, and I've seen a lot of kids come and literally give you a hug and say thank you for running this organization. This is a little different. This is a group of kids that give their heart out every single performance. They are extremely excited about this. And me, as a parent, I had my concerns. But getting to know these kids, and every weekend I'm at every single show, I haven't missed one. And seeing the way that they practice and Mr. Sarchetta and Mr. O'Brien, the protocols they put in place to make sure that these kids are safe, I 100% have confidence in the staff to make sure that our kids are going to remain safe. Whether I go as a parent to this trip or not, I no longer have concerns in traveling with this group every single weekend. And to see these kids compete every weekend together. Their last performance was this Sunday, and I've seen 22 seniors, to this day, still not stop crying because that was their last performance together. To take this away would be detrimental to those students, not only the seniors, but the entire band and staff. And me, as a parent, I'll be extremely, extremely heartbroken. So I hope that you consider that we, as parents, are very, very trustworthy of the staff that takes care of our children on a weekly basis. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other speakers for tonight? I'll ask for a second time. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight? Ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure.
Make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. You close public comment. Yes, Ms. Murray?
I'd like to make a motion that we take items out of order and vote on the band vote so that these kind people can have their vote and and wrap this up for them, because I feel a lot of anxiety from them, and I'd like to put them at ease and just give them some closure.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number two of Roman numeral number five out of order. On suspending the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Madam Superintendent, can you read number two on the report of the superintendent, please?
Absolutely. So Roman numeral five, report of the superintendent. Item number two is request final approval for the band trip to Hawaii. So turning our focus to the Crimson Tide Marching Band's trip to Hawaii for the 80th Pearl Harbor Day for Commemoration. I did want to start by addressing why we are even considering this matter tonight. This trip was initially approved by the school committee in January of this year, as is required since it is an out-of-state trip. But I felt that recent developments demanded that I bring it back to this body with all of the appropriate information and updates before we send our students to Hawaii. I just want to make sure that now that all the details have been worked out, everyone is fully aware of the plans and the contingency plans and still fully approves. I also want to make sure this body has an opportunity to ask any relevant questions or provide any feedback so that we have a month to implement any feedback you have or answer any questions that you have on what is most certainly an amazing opportunity that our students definitely deserve, but also an enormous responsibility that ultimately rests on this body's shoulders. So first and foremost, everyone who is going to Hawaii needs to know that if they have a positive test during the trip, they will be placed on a strict quarantine for 14 days. They will not be able to leave their hotel room for any reason, including getting meals, so they will be delivered to their room. If a student tests positive on the last day in Hawaii, this means they would potentially not return to the mainland until December 23rd. This is a simple but very plausible scenario that just bears me stating and making sure that everybody understands. One consideration that I want to make sure we are all fully clear on. It is also worth noting that the majority of the groups and individuals who were originally scheduled to participate have since chosen not to, including some of the distinguished gets some honor and some of our groups right here from Everett. Making this a slightly different trip than the one originally approved, so again, it just warranted revisiting. You know, I think it would be disingenuous of me to simply take last year's approval as the final word on this without informing you of all of the recent developments. And so I just want to speak exclusively about making sure that this body endorses the overseas trip during COVID-19, again, not 12 months before the trip when there were still many uncertainties. We, even about how school would look right now, let alone travel, but now one month before this trip, when we have a clear picture of the circumstances and the considerations. And I definitely appreciate that the music department has ample experience taking students on trips that involve air travel. Further, I steadfastly believe that our students will follow all rules and procedures, that they will represent our high school and their families in a glowing light as they always do. And there is no argument that our students, again, deserve to go on this trip. They've been working very hard to rehearse and perfect their performance, which has been garnering a lot of praise and high scores on the competition circuit this fall. And again, not all of the COVID-19 considerations are negative ones. On the contrary, 97% of our travel party is vaccinated. Face coverings are required indoors in Hawaii, and organizers have gone to great lengths to schedule as many outdoor activities as possible, including meals. Our staff and chaperones will create as much as possible a bubble within our group that will stay together for organized outings and excursions. Hawaii has seen its COVID-19 numbers greatly improve over the past four to six weeks. The seven-day average of new cases in Hawaii topped 900 in early September, but as of late last week, the average was down to 130. So these are all positive indicators. The second major facet of this trip are the finances, and on this front, we have some clarity that I wanted to share with you from our last update two weeks ago. I feel that our position is very secure, given the scope of the travel. It was mentioned during our last meeting that the district stands to lose 100,000 if we canceled or had already lost $100,000 at that point. That is not actually the case. If we cancel today, well, because we purchased the additional insurance for 75% coverage, even after we've lost the 100,000, we are able to recoup 75,000 of those dollars. So as of last week, we had only lost $25,000. As of this week, or as of today, even though we've lost 200,000 on the initial insurance, again, we bought the additional insurance, which allows us 75% to recoup, which means that we will only have lost $50,000, and that is the case up until two days before the trip. So I feel very comfortable with our ability to respond to any unforeseen change in circumstances, whether they be in Hawaii or here, over the next few weeks. And also, if music celebrations for any reason, that's the group that organized this trip, does have to cancel, we would obviously receive a full refund minus our $1,500 deposit. Also, just some additional information, and I can also take questions for anyone who has them. But if a student does have to remain in Hawaii under quarantine, they would receive insurance to $200 a day for the 14 days, so that's $2,800 for the student's hotel, food, and airfare change costs, which obviously the district would be picking up. There is no guarantee a doctor would sign a quarantine order for the chaperone who stays behind if he or she tests negative. So we are prepared to pay for their expenses, even if insurance does not cover it. So again, all in all, I think that we are on solid financial footing where the trip is concerned. And just to recap, we have 65 students and nine staff who are going on this trip. The group will leave on the morning of December 3rd with a return flight scheduled for December 8th into the 9th, overnight, with a layover in Los Angeles. And again, over the coming weeks, if approved, we will continue to, as was asked, provide updates at every meeting, just to let you know some of the other contingencies, any other considerations we may have to keep you updated on the COVID numbers and to answer any questions that you may have tonight that we're unable to answer or to implement any feedback that you may have tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to all of you.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to first, I know I'm not supposed to respond, but congratulate the band. I had the opportunity to see you a number of times, and you were our background music every Monday night. So congratulations on completing your season. And I just echo, I know, having family members in the band over the years and extensive travel at Dayton, Ohio with the percussion ensemble, how well-prepared you are to take this on. And just as long as the parents are supportive and the parents understand, and everyone I've spoken to is very confident in this trip and the communication and transparency, I lend my full support and well wishes and hope that we have the opportunity to see the performance that you have.
Ms. Cardello?
Is it on? Okay, I can't see. I thought we had been told that the insurance would cover that 2,800 or 2,700 for the student?
So yes, it is 2,800. It's $200 a day. It was said 2,700 before, but it is in fact 2,800.
$2,000 a day for 14 days.
We have assurance that obviously if somebody tests negative, whether it's a staff or a student, and has to quarantine for 14 days, that $2,800 will cover their expenses, their change in airfare, which the company will help us with, their food, and any other, and the hotel as well. The only thing that could potentially not be covered is if, because the chaperone, if it is a student, a chaperone must stay behind, and we have a plan for who would stay behind in the case that a student had to stay behind and quarantine. You know, many doctors may not give you a quarantine letter if you do not actually test positive. And so just even in that worst-case scenario that they didn't, the district is prepared to cover those expenses, even if they're not covered by insurance, obviously. If they're are covered by insurance, wonderful, but it would be requiring a doctor's note and just having had our own experience and having talked to the company, we don't have guarantees that a doctor is going to write a note that somebody needs to quarantine when they're not off day.
That clarifies it. Thank you very much.
Motion for favorable action to allow the children to go to Hawaii? Is that a motion here or?
Back on the motion.
Okay, so motion is made and seconded to, you know, approve the trip. Ball on the floor?
Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Aberzey?
Clarification.
The money, where's it actually coming from? I mean, it was mentioned tonight that Senator D. Dominico is, so we're talking about that money when we're talking about money?
So actually, we have good news on that front. So yes, Senator D. Dominico did get us $200,000 earmark for the band. It was not specifically for the Hawaii trip. It was just for the band. Of course, we were going to spend it on the Hawaii trip. However, that money came in in this fiscal year, FY22. We had to put in most of our deposits and money in FY21. So the majority of the money that we already put down was actually from FY21, meaning that the earmark actually remains pretty much entirely intact. And so really, what we're losing is FY21 money. Not that that's not, you know, a big deal, but I do think that that is important because we've kind of, this is money we've already spent last year. So, and I will bring you the actual numbers of what was spent FY21 and what would actually come out of the earmark. I believe it's like 117, and that the remainder came out of FY22 and will come out of the earmark. But that means that we would still have leftover money. I also have a list that I will share with you all again if we approve or of incidentals that- that we're also planning for shipments of the instruments and the uniforms, things that haven't been covered, that will also be able to come out of that earmark. And the incidentals right now, again, it's very much an approximation. It includes baggage and things like that. Comes to about $23,000 that we plan to take out of the earmark.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the motion's on the floor, but on this, I personally would like to request Mr. O'Brien coming before us for a moment, if someone would second that.
Thank you. Motion's being seconded and bring forth Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
So move Mr. O'Brien.
It's a keyboard, Gene.
Joe's one of my former trumpet players, so, good job, Joe. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, first of all, thank you for having me today.
I still have the floor, I believe.
That's like a delay, yeah. Hello? Can anybody hear me? Oh, there you are.
It's the chairman. So Brian, through, through, it's Chairman to Mr. O'Brien. So Brian, I've been on the school committee off and on now for over 20 years, and you've been before us many, many times. And, I mean, personally, I just sort of want to clear something up here, because I get the somehow impression here is Samantha used the term anxiety, and I, I don't know what rumors, I don't know what was ever presented, but this aligns with, I think, the email you sent, I mean, I received it, I assume everybody else received it in terms of the band's trip, and you sort of outlined all the band's accomplishments and everything. And I have to tell you, I never in my mind that any time did it enter that there was the possibility that the band was not deserving of going to Hawaii. My only concern as a school committee member and as a parent and just happen to be a grandparent is, in terms of the health of it, that to me is the only consideration at all about this whole trip. And I just hope everybody understands that. That's my perspective on this, and quite frankly, I haven't spoken to anybody else on the school committee about this issue, where it's, where I'm a little bit surprised and quite frankly shocked about this idea that the word rumor was even brought up, that the, I don't know, that this was going to be stopped. I, I think the only issue has ever been the health of the people going on the trip and the potential, you know, what was going on in Hawaii and things like that. So I just wanted to tell you that when you sent the email and basically outlined everything, all the accomplishments with the band, absolutely, that quite frankly did not have to do that, the only thing that came to me from your email that I would like clarification on was in your email, now the superintendent has just said 97%. I believe you said 95% of the people were vaccinated. Now, when we're talking 95% of the people, are we talking about the adults going on the trip? Are we talking about the entire group going on the trip?
Yeah, the entire group, the, there's two children that can't get vaccinated because of medical conditions, and everybody else is vaccinated and their card's been photocopied and forwarded in our files, we're ready to go. So we have all the precautions, all set to go with them, and we're pretty excited.
Well, I said, so from my perspective, again, I just wanted to make that clear. Personally, I don't think there's any sort of a presentation or anything that I expected because I think everybody is, you know, pretty unanimous, really unanimous back when. My only concern was the health of everybody. That's nothing ever, I don't know what rumors were ever talked about, but nothing ever else entered my mind besides the health of the members of the band and the people going in, in the party. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Not Tracy O'Brien.
Real quick, Mr. O'Brien, we've been talking a lot about autonomy, especially with some of the building leaders as they present to us, and, you know, I look at you as you're the guy on this one. You know, my expectation is you're going to be the first, you know, the last one on the plane and the last one off, and you're the point of contact for all questions and concerns moving forward on this trip. So you own it. Would you agree?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I heard a motion to excuse the customary thanks. Was there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion being seconded to excuse the customary thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
So move. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Gene, for everything.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want, can everyone hear me? I, I just want to echo what Mr. Abraze said. First of all, thank Mr. O'Brien, thanks to all students and, and parents who came before us tonight and who are present here with us and the staff. When we had this discussion in our, believe, last meeting, the discussion was really only about, which Mrs. Sosha presented to us, did a great presentation, the discussion was really about concerns regarding health, like how the cases were. In fact, based on that, I even brought a chart today that I printed, how decreasing the numbers are in Hawaii. Hawaii is pretty safe. Numbers are decreasing. People hospitalized is down 23%. Tests are up, I mean, if you look at the chart, the whole thing is going down. And that was the main concern. The trip, the, the band is, you guys are simply amazing. And I know that because I've, as some of the speakers tonight mentioned, I went to DC for the Memorial Day Parade. In fact, I have a ticket to go to Hawaii, but the group that I was going with to see all of you there canceled, was the group led by Senator Saudi Domenico, so I'm no longer able to go, I'll be watching you guys from far. But it was never a question of the band should go or not, it was really about the health condition in Hawaii, which the number has shown has been decreasing. So it's, beyond that was just rumors, as it is in this city, pretty often. So I just want to thank our students and staff and parents. And if there is a, I believe there was a motion, a second already, the mayor made a motion, and there was a second, so I'm ready to vote for it.
Any other questions on the debate? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say congratulations to the band, and I've heard wonderful things, and just know that Everett is very proud of you, so continue that hard work.
Any other questions? If I may, from the chair? At that last meeting, a number of questions came out. None of those questions regarded the content of the character of the band, its members of the program. It was never a question. The only questions were financial and regarding public safety. And I think over the time period, through cautious due diligence, we now have the answers to the financial aspects. And by the way, you know, if we're going to pat ourselves on the back at times, me, Counselor Dela Solo, and Counselor DePero raised close to $3,000 at an event a couple of months ago, of which many of you attended. So, you know, we helped, we put it out there financially, too. And we just wanted to make sure that, you know, that the financial questions were answered. They were. The information's a lot better than what was presented two weeks ago. And also two from a health aspect. So again, in closing, you guys are great, you've been great, and, and you were never a question, never a question. And thank you for your time. So therefore, I'll ask one more time if anybody's comment, questions, seeing none of the motions before us, move for favorable action, to send the Everett High Marching Band Crimson Tide off to Hawaii to celebrate the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. How about a voice vote on this one, Mr. O'Connor? Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes, and aloha.
Mayor DiMaria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, and best of luck.
Chairman Parker? Yes, and don't eat a lot of Spam. Eight, eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Good luck. Thank you.
Good trip, guys.
And if I may, you should eat some Spam. I will say that, it is excellent. I do just want to say that we do support you all. We're very excited for you to have this trip. I can imagine that reading the way this was worded on the agenda of a final approval for the trip maybe made people's minds go certain places, certainly is, you know, brings on anxiety. However, I just want to let you know, because I know one of you that I'm looking at right now will be a superintendent of schools one day, and you will answer to a school board, and it will be upon you to implement protocols and processes, and that you sometimes just need to make sure that you're doing your due diligence and making sure everybody's on the same page, everybody's in agreement, and that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad thing, it's just to make sure that we're all communicating and we all, and, and sometimes even to just be able to see what you have right now, which is our full support, so. And now I'm going to move on to the superintendent's update, or move up to item number one. I will not be offended when you all walk out of the superintendent's update. I know it tends to be long, so for those of you, have a wonderful evening. Well, really, I thought you might stay for one slide, but okay. That good, huh? All right. All right. So it is election eve. I know most of you have a lot to do, and we'll have a busy day tomorrow, so I'm really going to try and get through the update as quickly as possible. So we'll start with the first slide. So these next several slides showcase some of the sights from the homecoming event that we held for EHS students and staff on Friday, October 22nd, and the District-Wide Fall Fest that was held on the 23rd. First, there were too many, there are way too many people to thank individually for planning, staging, overseeing, and supporting these events. Dozens of our staff members volunteered their time to make sure our students and families had a great time on what turned out to be back-to-back spectacular fall evenings and afternoons, and that includes many of you sitting at this table here, so we really appreciate all of your help and your support. The photos on this slide show the parade that was held on Friday, the 22nd. A large group of students and staff gathered in Glendale Park, most of whom were clad in crimson, and from there, the group walked from Ferry Street to Chelsea Street to Spring Street, and eventually into the Everett Stadium. And we had a lot of community members join, I know Chief Maisy joined the parade as well, so it was a wonderful event. Once the students got to the stadium, we had sort of a carnival-like setup, featuring food trucks from Kowloon, Roxy's, and the Cookie Monster. There was a photo booth, cornhole games, and a large inflatable obstacle course, among other fun activities. And this event was meant solely for our students and obviously staff and volunteers, which is what made it so special. So they did not have to share the spotlight with anyone else, the night was for them, and that made it, I think, all the more worthwhile. The feedback that we got was very positive. In fact, Principal Nauman said it was one of the best events of this kind that he has helped to oversee. And then, of course, the night ended with a game where the Crimson Tide had yet another victory over the Medford Mustangs. The marching band's halftime performance was also a big highlight of the night, and our cheerleaders kept the crowd cheering for more. So personally, it was, I had an amazing time at the event, and it was great to spend some of our times with our students before and during the game, as they enjoyed the festivities and celebrated as a, as a school community. You know, it's nice to see these things happening again, and a lot of times, it's, it's for me, some of the firsts. The new statewide playoff format begins this week, and we are scheduled to play Methuen on Friday night at 7:00 PM in a first-round matchup. We are on the road Friday night, and I say this as it may come to, as a surprise, as we are only one of two undefeated teams in the 16-team Division One bracket, but the power ranking system used by the state accounts for several factors, and when the numbers were crunched, we came out as the number nine seed. Also, the Crimson Tide Boys soccer team qualified for the MIA Division One State Tournament after a tremendous regular season in which they won 12 games. And also, as I prepared for tonight's meeting, we were still awaiting word on whether our field hockey team had secured a tournament berth as well. And I just want to congratulate all of our Fall Student Athletes who have just been doing a tremendous job, and it's been so great to be able to watch them back where they belong. The weekend continued with the District-Wide Fall Fest on Saturday afternoon at Everett High School. We had games and activities, face painting, balloons, a video game truck, photo booth, prize wheel, and food from Chicken and Rice Guys, Kowloon, and Cookie Monster. We handed out 1,400 attendee bracelets, so that's our estimate of the number of people who attended, and those gave them access to everything that Fall Fest had to offer. That number does not actually include the dozens of staff members and elected officials who enjoyed the afternoon. And in addition to EPS students and families, it was so nice to also see so many of our staff members there who were volunteering and just able, again, to just enjoy with our whole community, so I want to thank them for their support. The week of October 18th to the 22nd was STEM Week in the Commonwealth, and as we detailed during our last meeting, the EPS was an energetic participant. We were very honored to host Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito on Monday, the 18th, and I joined Principal Alex Nauman and Assistant Principals Janet Taylor and Arisa Perez and STEM KDA Director Rupi Cor, and leading Lieutenant Governor Polito and a group of distinguished visitors, many of whom are sitting here on a tour of our classrooms. My sincerest and utmost thanks and gratitude to the Kavarian teachers and students for their great work and passion. I have no doubt that the Lieutenant Governor left Everett with a full sense and appreciation of what STEM Week is all about. STEM Week was every bit as vibrant at Everett High. On Friday, October 22nd, I had the pleasure of joining Mr. Nauman in Elizabeth Benler's Robotics III class, and Mr. Nauman and I had a great time playing the circuitry games that the students had designed and constructed. They were very impressive, to say the least, and I just wanted to thank the students for their graciousness and their energy. It was great to wrap up our STEM Week events, participating in their games. A quick but just important reminder to our EHS students that we are hosting our first-ever college fair this Wednesday, 9/11/3, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM inside the gymnasium. More than 40 colleges and universities have confirmed their participation. Representatives from city year in year up, as well as trade and tech schools, will also be in attendance. I do encourage EHS students to attend Wednesday's fair, to talk to the professionals from these institutions of higher learning, and to get a sense of what might appeal to them. Obviously, we are thrilled to be able to provide this fundamental but very important opportunity for our students as they think about their post-graduation plans. In that same vein, we are thrilled to announce that we are continuing our partnership with Livius Prep, which is a proven leader in college and test prep services. So we introduced Livius Prep last spring, and this school year, we are pleased to extend virtual classes and our quote-unquote bootcamps to our juniors and our seniors. So between November 15th and 19th, Livius will host a college application bootcamp consisting of five one-hour sessions. We will have a college- We will have a college essay review open to 100 students, who will submit their first draft at the end of November and receive constructive feedback by December 17th. Finally, a virtual six-week, six-hour scholarship boot camp group class is slated between January 10th and February 25th. Juniors are encouraged to sign up for SAT and ACT test prep, which features 10 one-hour classes, followed by two hours per week for five weeks, leading up to the March 12th SAT. Interested students and families should reach out to the EHS Guidance Department. More information and signed-up information is also easily accessible via the homepage of the Everett High School website. And also, they will be receiving emails from their school leaders. We have continued our efforts to assess and reinforce our safety, security, and operations at Everett High School, and I think we've made really great strides on all fronts. As of today, myself and many of the central office staff have transitioned out of the high school back to, you know, our other roles. So for myself, for example, I will pick up where I left off in early October and begin conducting classroom walkthroughs at all of the schools. And at this time, I feel really confident that EHS leadership has the foundation and infrastructure to oversee the daily operations of the school. And of course, myself and the administration remain here to support them throughout the year and as need arises. Since our last meeting, we've hired several substitutes to cover teacher absences, as well as success coaches to give extra support to students who need it. We continue the process of seeking, interviewing, and hiring custodians. We are working with school leaders, EPS and city electricians, and American Alarm on checking that all of our cameras are working and placing new cameras where we've identified the need. Additionally, we want to install a system that enables tardy students to swipe their ID cards so their arrival is immediately recorded in our student information system. Overall, we're just trying to be, you know, proactive by implementing these changes and considering investments that make good sense, not only today but into the future, and not only at the high school but actually at our other schools as well. In addition, we are offering on-demand social and emotional services to our students. The Riverside Trauma Center is helping us lead this effort as we work with our high schoolers on identifying healthy coping strategies. And we are stressing the importance of self-care and connecting with students and staff who might need individual support or referrals. October was Hispanic Heritage Month, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the unit that was created for 7th and 8th graders by Whittier School teacher Ben Frank Avia, covering topics such as the history of Spanish colonization, independence of Spain, the history of Latin American countries, biographies of Hispanic-American heroes, the Hispanic-American experience, personal identities and cultures, and the importance of diversity and understanding. The coursework and assignments gave students access to all domains of language, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And the photo on this slide is just a small representation of the work that students produced as a result of their enthusiastic participation in these subjects. As a district, we shared ample resources for celebrating cultures and Hispanic Heritage Month, and this is a shining example of those resources in action. This was brought to my attention by Arcade Eight ELA Director, or ELA Literacy Director Genevieve McDonough, who was rightfully amazed by this work and wanted to share it with the community as a whole. And most heartening of all were the reactions of the students. One student remarked, "It's important to learn about others so you can know their struggles, cultures, and just overall know how others feel." And another said, "We learned about many cultures, and I think they're beautiful." Everett's total number of COVID-19 cases among school-aged individuals decreased from 82 in September to 52 in October. There are approximately 920,000 public school students in the Commonwealth, and thus far, COVID-19 has not caused widespread disruptions as far as classrooms and schools closing down around the state, and most importantly, here in Everett. I resist using the words "minimal disruptions" because every single case definitely has genuine ramifications for the student and for his or her family, and oftentimes for the class. But so far, the measures we have in place, including our vaccination efforts and the Tested Stay Initiative, are proving effective. Everett's vaccination rates among 12- to 19-year-olds continue to inch upward. Close to 80% of Everett residents between the ages of 16 and 19 have received their first dose, which means we're moving near to the point when we can consider removing the mask mandate for vaccinated individuals at Everett High. In the 12- to 15-group, Everett is a little below the state averages, but again, our first percentage, first-dose percentages are rising. And just as a reminder to the community, the City of Everett, the Cambridge Health Alliance, and the Tufts Health Plan are holding a free multipurpose clinic on Wednesday, November 3rd, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Connolly Center. Individuals can receive the Pfizer vaccine, the Moderna booster, and flu shots, all in one location. This is a great opportunity, once again, and we applaud the city and its health partners for making the vaccine and the boosters so readily available to our residents. The biggest update from the state is that the universal mask mandate has been extended through January 15th of 2022. DESI has been reviewing this at regular intervals, and in this case, the timeline was pushed from November 1st through the winter break. So far, as I said, the game plan we have been following has been working, so it is easy to understand why the commissioner wants to keep this guidance in place. And at this point, it is always a good idea to thank our students and encourage them for wearing face coverings inside our buildings and classrooms. Thank you to the suggestion of our student representative, Dinah Lewis. We made a concerted effort to generate feedback from EHS students about how the district can best utilize federal ESER funds. She actually helped us revise our survey, and the responses here point us to two areas in particular. The most popular choice among the big bucket areas where we can direct our funds was mental health. This shows that our students are equally, or maybe even more so, aware of this critical need. This ties back to some of the things I discussed earlier in highlighting what we are doing at EHS, and it goes back to the previous ESER results, survey results that we received from families, staff, and the community. Expanding our career and technical education programming garnered 29% of the responses, which is also consistent with feedback we've received from the other surveys and interest forums, and not just for ESER but over the past two years. There is a great demand for CTE among students, educators, and employers. Certainly, our long-range plans and strategy need to heavily account for CTE. And of course, this includes creating the space required for expanded state-certified CTE offerings. Personal protective equipment and tutoring and mentoring also garnered a combined 23% of the respondents. I just want to thank Ms. Lewis, and thanks to everyone who took time to complete the survey. It is not closed, so if people still want to provide feedback, we will be looking at it on an ongoing basis. We are exploring ways to support students who have dropped out of school, to reengage them and help them fulfill the missing requirements they need to receive an Everett High School diploma. So to this end, we're exploring the idea of a night school program at EHS, which would require one coordinator and three teachers. We would help overaged and undercredited individuals with instruction and scheduling that accommodates work and family obligations. And we envision offering a mix of in-person and virtual options. So the district's first-year reengagement specialist, Sarah Paiva, has been meeting with recent dropouts and their families, as well as those who might be at risk of dropping out. Having a night school in place will definitely allow us to be proactive in offering students a way to stay on track to earn their diploma. So this is a worthwhile endeavor in any instance, especially crucial for those who might need to pass one or two MCAS exams in order to graduate. And I look forward to speaking more about this in the very near future, perhaps as early as our next meeting, as we are developing a formal proposal that will require your approval. Finally, tomorrow is a mandatory professional development day for our teachers as our schools are closed for Election Day. For the first time, we're taking part in the shared virtual training being offered by the Five District Partnership, which includes Everett, Malden, Revere, Chelsea, and Winthrop. Teachers will participate in two separate sessions chosen from a large mix of more than 70 choices offered by the International Center for Leadership and Education, outside partners, and 5DP educators. And among the presenters are five EPS educators, Jessica Pallacani, Alana Russell, Kayla Dever, Elizabeth Ross, Erica Joyce, and Adrian Kaminski. The day also features two keynote addresses. The first, delivered by UCLA Professor Tyrone Howard, will focus on equity, access, and excellence in schools. Specifically, Mr. Howard will discuss the complex challenges that students encounter in their efforts to be successful and how we can support them socially, emotionally, and academically. The second keynote will be delivered by Dr. Adolf Brown, who is a very popular public speaker and presenter, and much of his work is concentrated on essential or center skills such as critical thinking, empathy, creativity, and teamwork. And that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not a question, just want to commend and congratulate the superintendent and all staff members who put together those two festivals, the Homecoming and the Fall Fest. It was after a year, not a year, almost two years, I should say, of a pandemic, seeing all of our kids back and smiling and the food trucks and talking and following with an amazing game with victory. And then the Fall Fest with all of our families outside of Everett High and enjoying was just amazing. So just want to congratulate everyone who thought about that and put that together and for all of our families who came to those events.
Thank you. Any other questions of the superintendent? I've got one. So going back to the vaccinations and the percentages. So, 16- to 19-year-olds, we're at 79.8%?
So 16- to 19-year-olds, we are at 79.8% for the first dose.
Okay, so when are we allowed, when are masks no longer required?
80% for both doses.
For both doses.
And so we are at 68.7%, which is not far, and that's definitely a few percentage points higher than we were at the last meeting when I gave an update. So we are slowly inching up. That being said, the mask mandate by the commissioner has been extended now to January 15th, which, you know, gives us more time to get vaccinated for the 80%, for the two vaccinations. And also, I think a large part of that decision was due to the holidays coming up. I think they just wanted to remain extra vigilant. That being said, he was very clear that if any local, you know, municipality was to reach 80% before January 15th, that we still reserve the right, this body reserves the right to make that decision locally.
Okay. And the reason why I brought that up was if you do the math, quick math, 2,100 students, 79% versus 80% is just 21 more kids. So maybe Ms. Lewis' rep can rally 20 more kids so he can get 80% for the first dose. So, all right, thank you. Any other questions regarding the update? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to our superintendent. So I want to encourage parents and staff to encourage their students to sign up for Livius. The program is free, and it's free to everyone who attends Everett High School. And I've been in contact with the director to ensure that we do get that full experience. But we do, like, need more students to sign up, and it's a very great program from my experience. So please reach out to your school leaders and fill out the form. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the update? Mr. Aberzey?
Just a quick comment. Superintendent alluded to it. I know some people might be stunned that there's two undefeated teams in Division One football, but the way they did it is they take into account strength of schedule. And unfortunately, the GBL had a horrific year this year outside of Everett. So that is why Everett is ranked ninth. I had the privilege to do St. John's Shrewsbury and St. John's Prep on Saturday. St. John's Shrewsbury is the Everett Thanksgiving opponent this year, and that will be quite a game to see if they are a terrific football team. And that would be great, but also just a heads up, the way the bracket is set up, if Everett wins their game against Methuen, the odds are they will be playing the number-one team, Franklin, in the second round. At, would be at Franklin, but if all goes well, Everett will have their opportunity to go through this bracket. So it's disappointing, but based on the way they did it this year, not unexpected from talking to fellow officials, the way the power rankings were done. For instance, St. John's Shrewsbury beat St. John's Prep on Saturday, but St. John's Prep is still rated ahead of St. John's Shrewsbury based on this formula. So things don't make a lot of sense, but hopefully, it will all come out in the wash, and Everett will get their opportunity to prove where they really are at. So, just because it is kind of a crazy thing that there's two 7-0 teams, and one of them is ranked number one, and one of them is ranked number nine. But that's just, I mean, the other crazy thing about the whole thing, the number-one team technically in the state is Catholic Memorial, but they're in Division Two. So, again, it's kind of a crazy scenario, but you will not get an opportunity to see Everett against Catholic Memorial based on the fact that Catholic Memorial is in Division Two, where John DiBiase will probably win every game by a name-your-score going through their turn-on. But just one of those things. So just wanted to add that to the superintendent's football analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other questions regarding the superintendent's update? Ms. Lewis?
Sorry, I forgot to mention that, like, continuing on the Livius thing, that Mrs. McCarthy will be having an info session for the students who are interested. So please reach out to him specifically for the link. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Lambert, do you have a question we got in the superintendent's update?
Actually, I did.
Okay. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the superintendent. I was just trying to understand, because I know that the 16- to 19-year-olds are pretty close, but does it not have to be the entire population? So it has to be inclusive of 12 to 19, and then what happens when 5 to 11 gets added, hopefully, tomorrow?
I imagine that they're going to use that same percentage threshold, and so it's going to take us a while to get to that in Arcade Eights.
So it's the entire?
Entire school.
Okay, so if, say, 14- to 19-year-olds reach 80%, it's potentially, we could potentially eliminate the mask mandate for vaccinated individuals at the high school alone? Or does it have to be the entire district?
Oh, that's a great question. It could be at the high school alone.
Okay. Thank you.
All set? Any other, I think, questions we got in the update? So with that, I apologize. I was remiss that, you know, Ms. Lambert wanted to be recognized earlier during a roll call, pleas of allegiance. I missed it. So if I can give you the floor at this point, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to request that we have a moment of silence for Mr. Dick Mangerean, who was a principal, a longtime principal at the Parlin School. He was one of those educators that, he changed the trajectory of a lot of lives, and he understood social and emotional learning before it was a buzzword. You know, I used to joke that he liked the troublemakers the best. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a man that gave a lot to Everett, not just through the school system, but also through many other youth sports and other opportunities. So, thank you for that.
Okay. If you could all just rise for a moment, please? Thank you. Okay, Madam Superintendent, number three, please.
Thank you. Item number three is a trip to New York City, presented by members of the Everett High School History Club. So the Everett- So the Everett High School History Club, which is led by advisor and our EHS teacher, Mr. Wayne Bailey, is requesting the school committee's approval to travel to the September 11th Memorial in New York City. On Saturday, November 20th, the students will leave from Everett High School at 5:00 a.m. and spend four hours at the 9/11 Museum and Memorial. After having dinner in Manhattan, the coach bus will depart for Everett at 7:00 p.m. and return by approximately midnight. And we will also, they'll be providing an update. If approved, they will be providing us an update or after their trip to let us know how it went.
Move for favorable action?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move for the action to send the History Club to New York City. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number four is to request approval of the MOU between EPS and the Everett Police Department for School Resource Officers. I request that we lay this on the table until our next meeting, as that is when representatives from the EPD are able to come and answer questions. As I mentioned, on October 18th, our agreement with the EPD does remain in place, and we'll continue to utilize our school resource officers while we work on putting our new MOU in place. And again, we want to thank the EPD and our SROs for all that they do.
So moved?
I'll second.
Ms. Cardello, would you make the proper motion, please?
Thought they just made motion to?
Postpone, though.
Postpone, okay. Sorry, didn't pick it up. Move to postpone the item until the following regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to postpone the matter to our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion carries. Item number five, please.
Yes, thank you. So item number five is, currently reads as a request authorization to approve contracts for Livius Prep and Empow Studios, which were the two winning bids from our Business and Community Partnerships, RFP. We discussed Livius Prep earlier tonight. Empow Studios is another provider we are happy to partner with in our ongoing efforts to expand after-school and enrichment opportunities for our students. Empow offers award-winning virtual STEM classes in coding, Minecraft, film, animation, 3D design, engineering, and robotics for students between the ages of seven and 15. And our intention is to have EPS staff members support our students in our classrooms as they participate in Empow programming virtually after school. That being said, I do respectfully request that we amend this language to state, to request authorization to sign the contracts for Livius Prep and Empow Studios.
So moved?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to amend the contract by deleting the word "approve" and adding "and sign." All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. You have amended. So on the piece as amended?
Move for favorable action?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and motion's been made and seconded for favorable action for item number five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. You have, uh, motion carries.
Thank you. And the next Roman numeral in which we have items is Roman numeral eight, bills and payrolls.
Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,248,314.45.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,248,314.45. Can I have a roll call, Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor DiMaria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica? Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Chairman Parker?
Yes, 70 affirmative. You have approved and zero the negative, so you approved the matter before you, Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to inform the school committee that Mr. LaMonica had to leave. His son had an injury at football practice tonight.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,248,314.45.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,248,314.45. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor DiMaria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Chairman Parker?
Yes, 70 affirmative, zero the negative. You have motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure?
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just kidding.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion to adjourn, I just want to wish everyone who's running for reelection or election good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good luck to all. It's gonna be the first time since 2003 I'm gonna get some good sleep tonight. All right. Do we have the motion's made and seconded to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. You have to adjourn.
Have a good night, folks.